I want to be real brief here, if I can be, but I want to take a couple minutes. We did have our first meeting with Hillland County Planning and Zoning, Chris Schneider. I think he's available. Mayor was available myself. We talked about the review of our current ordinances. We have our October meeting, which is going to be scheduled, or will be scheduled by Hillland County and their assistants. So that is in the process of being started. Any questions with respect to that? As you all know, we've finished up our final three public hearings and included the Is Out Of Body on that. I want to thank everybody, in particular, Is Out Of Body, as well as the residents, because it is a win-win situation, my own little opinion. It works for you, sat with us, and agreed with the residents irrespective of one person or ten people she represented, whomever. And I want to be very clear that complaints need to be valid. Not taking really-nilly complaints of somebody looking over the fence and saying, "I don't like this." If it doesn't, it's in violation of the ordinance, it'll be looked at. If it's not, it won't be addressed. And I do believe that this is in the best interest and interest of Cleves and the residents. As long as you're happy with that, I hope. Do you have any questions? Let me know. I had been mentioned too in an email, everybody got pretty passionate. I drove down Scott Street, I guess it's Scott Street, I guess, and there was a back alley there, there was some dumping and so forth. I don't know if anybody in Cleves here on council has had an opportunity to drive any streets around Mount Nevo or any of that area, but we've got a lot of work to do. And to address some of your concerns as far as other cars being parked there, we did talk about that. That we're in the process of handling that. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that notices have to be given, obviously, and that you're not aware of. So I am aware that notices have gone out about some parked cars back there and so forth, and we'll address those. Where they stand, I'm not sure. I don't know if we have enough paperwork or is zoning enforcement where any of those letters might stand. But irrespective of that, I think it is, I think that I invite council to drive some of these streets around Lower River Road, Mount Nevo, question Scott Street off of the alleyways, and see the dumping of just residents. I don't understand how you could live in a community and have that kind of stuff on your property. I don't know if there's a way that we can get it out to the residents that this is not going to be tolerated. I'd like to see some signs that say, "No dumping," let's see fines enforced. This is your community, it's not a dumping ground. People who live here, what do you live up in Coleman Woods, Ascent View, Westgate? Wherever, you know, you've got a right to have your community clean, stable living. These ordinances are designed to enforce that. And I'm pretty passionate about it. I've got to live here. So I think it behooves us, and I invite council, as well as you, our administrator, to kind of run some of these streets and take a look at them. Would you want to live next to this? I've got news for you, if I don't ask you, I don't live anything next to that. If you did, we would address it. But just because it exists in other places doesn't mean it's out of sight or out of mind, and I don't think that's something that we tolerate.
Village is a hundred percent zone, but I don't know how much attention this takes to certain areas. And I think we need to start paying attention. You know, let's be real. COVID did affect things. It affected how much attention was being paid to certain things, and we've got to get back on the stick here. We are completely zoned village, there's no area in the village that is unzoned. So we do need to look at this kind of stuff. I agree.
So I know that we are establishing our mayor's court, and I cannot take the foot as to when we believe that might be incorporated?
Go ahead, Justin. I wish we had better names.
Do we, do you want me to speak on that or the safety committee report, or do you want to talk about it now?
Well, I think, I think though together for a couple reasons. And Jerry wanted some very specific things discussed on council, but she's not here tonight. Justin and I talked about that earlier today, and I know she really needs part of that, that she is the chair of that committee. But in that being, Ed, you were there. The other rest side here, I was there, Justin was there. Ted, maybe you want to talk a little bit about what you thought. You've got the notes here, maybe the best review to address some of the things, and they do directly impact our nature.
I haven't had a chance to review them yet, but. Sergeant Arnie talked about a lot of different things to be involved, and basically they were saying a lot of discussion was about guns being shot in the village. And they basically stated that you can't enforce our ordinance, but they will investigate anything that's reported. They gave example of one individual firing off a weapon, but even under stress or under the influence, that they were able to take legal action against them. But there's been other cases where people were just out party shooting, and they couldn't do anything about it. So we're not going to get any help from county on this issue. Basically, that's, it's going to be up to us to enforce our ordinances, and the only way we can do that is by having our mayor's.
Well, I think I have more just the mayor's court. We're going to have to have an enforcement officer, whether we have a constable, or whether we have the zoning officer, and do it, cite people. That's a whole new can of worms, you're going to have to, whether Ed's willing to do that or not. There's a whole bunch of paperwork that may go into this to work out.
Originally, we were going to use the magistrate of Addison, along with some of the stuff that they already have in place. That's not going to happen.
That can't, that can't really happen. One, there's only one user, they're used twice, their contract office, Baldwin, does not allow us to use it. First, second, we were, it was a good idea, and then when you tried to put it, the plan in practice, we realized that our mayor's court would be starting around nine, nine-thirty, and right. So I signed the contract with Baldwin, and I was working with their legal department, I've been working hand-in-hand with Mr. Burholz and the mayor. Really, these answers are always part of a larger question, right? Mayor's Court limitations. Mayor's Court's not intended for civil citation. Historically, when Cleves had similar cases, and we handled past, they're kind of separate from mayor's court. So we would run them right after mayor's court. We would run our mayor's court docket right after that. We would run zoning court, for lack of a better term. That's, it's an administrative board. I think we still have that ability. Rob and I are exploring how we, how we make that work. It may not be called mayor's court, or be a court of record. But I do think that setting up, having a neutral here, these cases, determine liability if they're cited, is a possibility. For zoning only, for our civil citations. You know, to move down to your issues and enforcement challenges. We have recurrent issues with our local ordinance enforcement, quality of life concerns, like Mr. Babel said, whether it's discharging a firearm in village limits, or it's overtime parking, or jump vehicle, parking an RV on the roadway, or a semi, and I could go on and on. We have, it's directly tied to our inability to organically enforce our local laws.
So do I hear you, Ben, in the bottom line, we can incorporate a mayor's court whatsoever? The bottom line, yes or no?
At this point, no. We don't have local law enforcement. Our contracted service will not enforce our.
Our contracted services will not enforce a civil ordinance. They won't enforce a civil ordinance in Hillland County.
They won't enforce a civil or a criminal ordinance of this.
They cannot, they cannot tell me Hillland County's not enforce a criminal violation to the village of Cleves.
Criminal, yes, they stated, but not.
They won't do a civil.
Like when you're talking, and ordinance is separate from the Ohio revise code.
They actually stated that that's anywhere in the state of Ohio.
That's correct. They won't even do it for Hillland County, I get it, yeah. But how does Hillland County then, or any place, then enforce their zoning ordinances? If there's not a mechanism there to hear that. Now, we explored whether we were going to have a mayor's court, or whatever you want to call it, or we were going to look at looking at Addison. What is, why are we not using, why can't, what is preventing us from using Addison?
That doesn't. Is there, could Addison's magistrate come here and, and serve as our neutral?
No, we had talked about using Addison's physicality, their facilities, neutral, and it would be not here in Cleves, but using their magistrate, their software, we're paying for them, or whatever was talked about.
It's a licensing.
It's a licensing issue with Baldwin. What relation to software? It's a two-pronged answer. First, the licensing issue with Baldwin. We can't do that. Second, and I'll defer to the solicitor on this, but I've been on the Addison's mayor's court, and you are the local ordinance.
I'd rather look deep into that than ours, in the sense that you're getting into areas that I can't answer. But, you know, maybe, maybe going on here. I think I had said I heard gunshots too, since you that. Well, and again, I didn't know if it came from North Bend, or for that fact, Cleves. But you cannot tell me that if you don't call 911 and say, "I heard gunshots," and they go, "Well, that's a civil matter." I'm not going to go investigate it. God forbid there be somebody dead on the property. Against Hillland County, not going to investigate it. They're going to go investigate you. And if they find out that a gentleman, whomever, whomever has discharged a weapon, intoxicated, or under the Disabilities Act, that he can't have a weapon, or a day, or whomever can't have, we're going to arrest him. But if he was going to fire it off, I don't see how that's not against the law, because I think it's a safety issue. What if I fire my gun up in the air, and it lands and finds out killing somebody? So that's, that's a civil matter.
It affects criminals.
You just told me it was civil. If I fire.
I remember you saw a fire that killed somebody, that.
I understand that, but my point being is, I have no idea if I shook, if I shook my gun up or somebody could die. My intent wasn't to kill somebody, I'm going out there having fun, popping these up. How can we criminalize it?
It is criminalized under our Ohio Basin Code. So when you look at, when you look at criminal laws, you have two problems. You have the Ohio revise code, which is enforceable by state laws. Locally in Cleves, Ohio, we have the ability to, to adopt more stringent laws, which is where we have Ohio Basin Code, where we've adopted, if we're kind of part of being. If you're pointing about gunshots, sure, if you're under disability, meaning if you're felon, underserved convictions, or if you're drug dependent, alcohol dependent, you're under disability, yes, go shoot your gun, they determine you're under disability. You would ultimately, would be arrested for possessing weapons under disability. If you're reckless in that regard, or you're trying to assault somebody, or commit another crime with a firearm, sure, those are, will under the Ohio revise code. But if you go outside with no criminal intent, then you just discharge your firearm. A nuisance, right? Nobody's put at risk, it's just a nuisance. I call that a quality of life issue. Residents in Cleves seem to predominantly not want to have their neighbors shooting guns, whether it's unsafe or not, because of a nuisance. Ohio Basin Code says that the village of Cleves cannot discharge a firearm. Period, end of story. We used to be able to enforce that when we had organic law enforcement authority. We don't have that anymore. And I believe you were at the meeting with sheriff's office and others where this directive comes directly to their legal department, that they will not enforce any municipalities, but ordinance. And so therein lies the problem.
So why is the way, sorry, what's the difference between the basic code and revised code to the sheriff's department? Are they, they refuse the basic code?
Yes, a basic, basic code is an ordinance. So if this council, when you were on council in 27, we adopted overtime parking, right? Overtime parking's not addressed in the Ohio revise code, right? But the village of Cleves, because of our parking issues, we adopted an ordinance. We codified it, we gave it a criminal penalty section saying, you can't park a vehicle on the roadway for over seventy-two hours, right? If somebody just, that's still an ordinance on our books, it's a valid law. If somebody decides to park a vehicle today and he violates eggs on it forever, they're breaking our law. But we have no law enforcement arm to enforce it. Now, we're needing that with many ordinances that we have that don't apply.
He's talking about a crime.
It's an unclassified misdemeanor traffic, a criminal kind of run, and a man.
We have another agent who can issue citations for civil matters.
It's not a civil matter, it's a, it's a codification, criminal or traffic model. And you can get into, and I later talking about Ed Lindig Schmidt. So if we had a law enforcement arm organically, we could then extend his authority to be a parking enforcement officer. So yes, then he could enforce parking related issues and parking citations like others, beater maids for the temple. At this point, we don't have, it kind of all goes back to the root that we don't have organic law enforcement authority here in Cleves, and our contracted service has said that they will not enforce our local ordinances. And that was my next point on here is decision. In my opinion, and I think my communication with Rob, it feels the same. The council has to determine their path forward. Is that that we're going to refrain from enforcing these local ordinances? Are we going to establish some sort of hybrid solution? I don't know what a hybrid solution looks like. We have to be discussion on it, but at this point, our employees are in a lose-lose situation where, yes, they can go to Lower River Road, or they can go to Markland, or anywhere where there's an issue. We can receive the complaint from our citizens, we can go out, we can address it, document it, write a report, send them a notice. But it's like we're a dog without a pee, bark nobody, we can't, we can't cite them. Ultimately, we can't do anything with our ordinances.
So with, with our ordinances, kind of a penalty for a fine, true?
Right, yes. Well, not necessarily. When we adopt them, no, but then they go, at this point, they go to Emily, where they're codifying, and they're.
So once, once our ordinance has become codified, and someone says, you know, "I'm storing whatever, and you come find me, ten dollars a day, whatever, and I refuse to pay it." Do we not have a mechanism put there under property taxes? We looked at that, we talked about that.
If it falls under zoning, then yes, we could.
Then why aren't we doing that? It's a mechanism, it's unfortunate.
If it happens, and what's going to happen is you issue the fine, but we've got to send it on the law. Do that, do with it now, we want, want.
For zoning issues, but not for criminalizing.
Yeah, our, our ordinances are civil.
No, no, not all of them.
We're talking about our citizens. Which ones are criminal?
We have, we have the basic code.
Or like cutting your grass, not cutting your grass is not. Okay, so let's, let's set aside the safe bargain, not talking about our criminal ordinance. I'm talking about our zoning, only prevents tires being stored, or cars being stored, or junk, or whatever be that is made. Let's talk civil. Now, I know we've cut grass, say, we, maybe this is cut grass. I don't want to repeat in those costs.
We are going to have, put it on the taxes, and the process of revamp, which I spelled out long ago, and it happens when the council says it that. Now, Ed has been instructed to give fines, but no collective deed can stop those taxes.
I'm okay with my property. I'm, I'm okay with it building up, because whoever's going to get some kind of lien on there, and if they can't sell their property, they're saying, "Well, I have property taxes, and I got all these A, B, and C liens on there." I got to do something about it. And they're going to collect it. And it's going to be collected through Hillland County, your statement? So that in itself is kind of motivating to kind of enforce it. I don't need an arm of the law going out there and saying, again, I think we talked about Justin being that man, or not speaking with Marshall, possibly, or adding a Marshall. So my point being is, why can't we do it civilly and start to issue these fines, irrespective of how we collect them? If they add up to a thousand dollars, that's, that's.
I know, but I'm not just reading. You're not asking, because, because I had that discussion with you early on. You had that discussion after, after the discussion I had with the mayor over in North Bend, and I went ahead and contacted the council county auditor, and they gave us the process to do. And I don't see any reason, with one exception, in our, in our property maintenance, because we have fines for some things. We don't have fines for other things, that we could have and should have.
They need a fee schedule and.
Which I.
Because.
Which I said we need to get that.
Correct. And Scott Solomon, doing it over at North Bend, and. We're looking at the county.
Yes, and we need to get this fee schedule, but our maintenance reveals for cars and things like that. And that's what's got to happen if we're going to put fines. You can't issue the fine if we haven't adopted what that fee schedule, if that is something that's going to have to be done.
Yeah, that's got to be. Look on the.
That would have to go through zoning, wouldn't it?
I think if, if, I think that the fines schedule has to be developed, and probably has to go to council, not. Irrespective, I don't.
What I'm saying is, develop, develop zoning, because Baldwin's done it, then approve by zoning, then buy the count.
I would agree with that.
I really, that's fine by me. We need to go look somewhere, we can, we can talk about it, Hillland County, see if they can help us with the fines.
All of the issues involving fines for weed, I think Ed either has been or should have been, because I instructed him a long time ago. But it's happened, doing it on the cars, and I don't know, Rob, you want to address what should you know about the cars that would have been dealt with under the Ohio revise code? No, I've not looked at.
Again, table is, in a second. No, no, I really won't, because I'm going to tell you why. I've been on council since November, your statement? There we are in November, and we're no further wrong than where I'm asked us to be. And I know a lot of things have been in the process. So if I'm going to sit here and tell people that we're going to enforce them, and we have no mechanism, but we can do certain other things, I would rather us be doing some certain other things to do this.
I don't disagree with you.
And, and again, I told you I'm pretty damn passionate about it. And to sit here and sit there and make excuses why we can't do it, I want to find reasons why we can. Now, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I've, I've talked with Hillland County Sheriff, they're not going to enforce our civil ordinances. They're not going to go out there and say, "Hey, you didn't cut your grass, we're not going to mark your tires." I get that. I don't ask, if they don't do it in Hillland County, they don't do it anywhere else. But again, we've got people that have got grass growing, weeds growing, or junk, whatever. And if we can enforce them, and while you fines, and collect them, and go through their property taxes, I ask for that back when.
And what's that?
So where are we with it? I'm not, it's rhetorical question, and it's not meant to, it's not meant to finger point. I'm just saying, either we get off our butts and do it, instead of talking about. What needs to be done? So I'm going to challenge whatever, whomever, that by the November council meeting, I want some answers. Is that a fair?
What you want is you want to have a fee schedule developed, which is what I thought you about, Justin, and I thought you about it, Rob.
Well, I'm.
But you're not going to get it.
I know we're all busy. So again, I apologize, I'm not pointing things. I know we've got issues and priorities set. But I think right now, the tire is going to meet the road. And so I'm asking for some kind of reasonable execution of being able to make these ordinances. Whether we find property, residents put on there, and recruit maintenance costs. If we're going to have people go out there, our people, our maintenance, go out and cut people's grass, I think there's going to be something where we recruit their costs. So please. I'm David Henry, four, Henry, but.
Well, I think this is, I, I don't disagree with anything you just said. So Justin, as the administrator, we need to have a fee schedule in place by November.
Do something that we can take a look at.
Sure. I'll work with our, I'll work with our law director to come up with a legal fee schedule.
What is the scope of this stuff? Like, what you guys just said is, all right, you're going to legislate on everything we don't like anymore. Like, what are we talking about here, Luke?
Nuisance.
Or go up to Constance Avenue, take a look at the first house on the left, or ask John, not John, but ask, ask Ed to show you what's behind that house, and what they had to deal with, the burning of, of, of wire there. I'm just asking you to be, so the reason on the table of this discussion is because it's unfocused. So we clearly have a number of problems to do with that grass. I think it's, I don't like your particular objection that to anything proposed here. It sounds like you have a process, which is a reason to move it to another committee to do the legislating. Come up with a suggestion, then come back and see if they're working. Like, it doesn't need all of our times. And I'm going to remain ignorant of all the one hundred different types of issues. But I would recommend to you to pick them off. Okay, we're going to take care of burning licenses, or parking licenses, or grass cutting licenses. Because if you think they're covering it all in one fell swoop by November, it's going to be. I think everything is outlined, and the property name is covered, the pain issue we have. And then. That's, that's so to restrict yourself. That is what has to happen. Okay, if you think that, you're going to look, law from Marbury Path, it's been on the books since 2010. All you've got to do is go in there and take a look at cars, junk, it's all in there. It's a matter of putting a fee schedule together. And to me, it sounds like, what are our enforcement issues? And I don't think we've properly represented the discussions with HCSO, your guests. But because it was the statement that Ed can write the ticket, nobody willing to serve it, but they'll get the authority out there, but they're not going to be the one writing the ticket. So. They would, Ed wrote up the violation, maybe we deliver. And on our civil matters, to our mayor's court.
We don't have a mayor's attorney, my.
To our, I asked the question, and not all of us have the privilege of being president of this community. I asked the question, you've got a mayor's court tomorrow, could you, would we write a ticket to it, go deliver it? The answer was yes.
Yeah, that, that is.
So we're not at a perfect understanding of the facts here. I don't even know if that's relevant to our proposed solution. But it, it sounds like there's a stepwise process that we need here. Changing the ordinance to include your schedule, sounds like a fine step. That may be inadequate, so if we can identify what other steps, I would appreciate that. But I think we've got to pick them off piece by piece, so I. Use your enthusiasm for the process, for what I was saying.
Well, I'm going to take objection to the fact that it's unorganized. Mayor's point, we do that in the international property maintenance code. That's what we're trying to address. And the reason why I'm talking about this is, again, I went down one of the streets, couldn't get down the alley, because people are dumping things. And the reason why I'm talking about this is, again, I, I went down one of the streets, couldn't get down the alley because people are dumping things. And if, if you knew the person that was, you wanted to find them, I don't understand what the mayor's court would do. Siding in the mayor's court, they could come here and say, you're guilty, or whatever, I don't know. But I guess if they wanted to refute the fine, said, well, I have no place to put it, so I just dumped it in the road, because that's what I want to do. You may not have the luxury of, uh, you know, you have the luxury that maybe your, your residents, your neighbors don't do that, but other residents don't. And they just dump their stuff, we just talked about it in parts, they found the, the, the sofa was on the alley, and they found the chase lounge in the parks. So how do you enforce the ordinance? I just, what, what, okay, we're starting to happen? That's why I'm saying, we, we had a mechanism to try to get the mayor's court in place, if that's not gonna be, what is the mechanism? Why have the ordinance, and why would, why didn't we just spend how much money on Amleg to get it codified and can, can enforce it?
But it sounds like we've identified a missing piece for the enforcement, the schedule.
If that's the missing piece that, like some of the drams.
Yeah, that's not the whole missing, this is a chunk.
Then we'll table that part for them, whatever miss, missing parts you want.
Ted, you want to talk about anything else on safety or not?
No.
I'm good. I'm gonna move on to my mayor's court.